I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Town in Manlis Planning Board Meeting for April 21st, 2025. We are in person and hybrid online as well. The first item on our agenda is the approval of our minutes from April 14th, 2025. If anyone has any comments or questions, you can let me know. Otherwise, I take a motion for approval of the minutes.
I second. I'm gonna make a motion. It's not April 14th, it was the 7th.
Oh, yeah, you're right. It's not on the minutes, sorry. Yeah, it's on the minutes, but yes. Yep, okay, okay. All right, so motion made by Rich for April 7th minutes and second by David. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Minutes are approved. The next item on our agenda is for Steven Winchell at 5198 Townsend Road in Manlis. This is on the agenda for the public hearing and a possible decision for a two lot subdivision at the same address. The tax map is number 099 point dash 02 dash 17 point 3. So we will be having a public hearing, but before we do that, if you don't mind coming up and just letting us know what the updates.
Yeah, sure. You've done. Yep, so you should have the revised survey for last meeting's comments. They're moving to the House, showing the proposed new driveway to the proposed new house subdivision lot. You'll have copies of the meets boundaries for both Lot 1, Lot 2, and a proposed declaration of easement access agreement.
Yeah, I remember your comment about the easement.
Sure.
So, I noticed that your map says it's going to be filed when there's a transfer, but what it really has to be is a declaration of easement.
Yep.
By the current owner, declaring as to Lot 1 and Lot 2, the easement is in favor and it's immediate. So, in order to file the map, then this will have to... It's a chicken and egg. You can do it either way, but if you file the map and file the easement, but it's just for the owners as they exist, the owner as it exists right now.
Okay.
So it runs with the lot.
Right.
So, you know, I don't know if someone would need some...
Well, so I guess it's just, like you said, it's what you can first chicken or the egg, so I think...
But for sure, excuse me, but for sure, we don't want it to be like, and later we're going to put it in. It's actually part of this approval, is that it has the appropriate easement. So, we're almost there, right? And I, it just needs to...
Tweak.
It needs to be tweaked.
Okay.
So, I can send a form of declaration of easement, so it's gonna be owner declares the easement, signs it, notarizes it, and it becomes part of this package, and it all gets filed.
Okay.
But otherwise, it means kind of, like I said, it's the...
Okay, okay.
The, this is, the legal is on here, yeah, so that's fine. Lot 1 and Lot 2 are certified, right? So, it's, yeah.
And then just...
Since we're on the easement, even though we don't usually get involved in this kind of thing, I think that easement to protect yourself needs to be tightened up a little bit. I mean, it discusses a 50-50 split
Right.
of maintenance. How about reconstruction? How about other things that could happen in that driveway?
Okay.
And just because, and I'm not sure who's gonna end up with these lots.
Well, initially, the one person is, so I mean, it's...
But you could sell it next week, next month, you never know what happened. But if there's a problem, say that I buy lot, this is 2.
2, right.
I buy Lot 2, and you say, "I'd like to repave the driveway."
Right.
And I say, "No, I'm not gonna do it." There's nothing in your easement that says, "How, how do you move forward if one of the parties doesn't agree?"
Okay.
And then whoever owns Lot 2 is gonna get the bulk of the lead if Lot 1 doesn't pay for whatever you're doing. So, I'm not an attorney, but when I read through it, it just...
Should we play one on TV?
Play one on TV.
No, I said that Holiday Inn at Spence last night. But it's just...
Are you saying, Rich, because especially because like the driveway is different, is a lot more on Lot 1? Yes.
This lot.
This is Lot 1, yeah.
So, there could be some issues and problems, and even though you're gonna gift it to your daughter or son, whatever may happen shortly, down the road, it could become problematic.
You want a little bit more explicit?
Yes.
As suggested.
Right?
As suggested. If it were 2, you would...
Right, I always wanna type that.
And then, what should we, any comments on the proposed...
Yeah, so, when, when, so this map has to be fixed one more time. So where it says "proposed," take that off.
Okay.
And...
Yeah, I see two spots. I don't know if there's any more. Is there a third one?
Uh, no, two, sorry.
Yeah, the proposed 20-foot wide driveway easement and then the proposed driveway, just the word "proposed."
Yep.
There's also the proposed 10.
And then... What's there is?
The proposed under round 10.
Who knows that's proposed?
I don't care about those drivers. We don't really care about that.
Yeah, okay.
We only care about this, that this property can use this, and that, that it's for me.
So we can, we can...
No, yeah, that's fine. That's just for kind of zone information. So then, the note at number 5 is going to say declaration, see declaration of easement dated, and it's actually gonna have a date because you go there, execute it, right? Dated X, you know, and filed simultaneously with subdivision map. So it's no, not that it's gonna be filed, it's like...
You want it done, you want it done immediately.
Right, it'll be done.
And there's the word "proposed" also in that note.
In the sentence.
Yeah, in that note.
And then also here.
Right, we're just gonna refer to the actual document that is gonna be dated, notarized, signed. And then that will, that will take care of it. And even though, again, it's chicken or egg, you're gonna, you're gonna file the map, and then you're gonna file this, and then someone's gonna have to actually know how to do a little tiny bit of research to find it, but
Yep.
they'll be able to find it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you have any questions?
Um, I probably will, but I get the juice of having this.
So, Sir Player did this.
Yeah, he did all of it.
Do you have a lawyer for someone?
I, not for this. I'm sure Mr. Winchell does. I do not.
Practice is available. So just, yeah, just... Just to make sure the document is...
Yep. Sure.
It's a legal document. It's gonna literally...
It might be a good example for that, yeah.
Yep, okay, appreciate that.
So, I can send a sample easement.
That would be great.
Um, to whom should I send it?
You could, if you could email it to me or email it to Lisa, and she can forward it.
Yeah, but, you know, anybody can talk to me about questions. It's pretty standard there.
Okay.
Just for my curiosity, what is this 100-foot, limits of 100-foot wide protection easement in this center of property?
Uh, there's a drainage culvert.
A drainage culvert? Oh, I see, there's a creek in the middle.
Yeah.
Okay.
So he's gonna have to build this house over.
At the DEC set back.
Well, this is, he's not giving us anything to build yet.
Right, we're not...
I was just curious myself.
Right, right.
In the future, that might...
I think it's a setback.
Yeah.
Environmental requirements. Not on this project, right? Well, it could.
It could, or better, it's like the house.
Yeah. Do they need to look at that, Doug, and let us stop, you should be fresh eyes on that culvert?
I don't think so. I mean, that's an area of extreme, it's not private property, it's extreme. It's out to those limits, and there's never been a problem with the house. But we have, you know, those big star wells. There's a flood that goes through here.
So they're already showing the 100 foot.
Yeah.
But that is the 100 foot.
It's a good courtesy thing, a 100 foot.
Yeah.
What about the culvert size?
It's under private property.
Well, for when they're built, if they go to build, then it's...
Well, Tom's gonna have to give you the building permit, residential, you don't gotta see it.
Right.
And right now, they're saying this is the 100 foot, and they might have to put the house, who knows, way over here. We don't know what the, you know, that point the DEC might say, "Well, we want 300."
Well, I think we're Jason Schules at the last meeting, which is far off, sorry, man.
Yeah.
Right there, yeah. What is in the note along the bottom property line, just out of my curiosity, it says 30-foot easement, an existing service system in the slot era. Is that...
So, so there's an easement for the neighbor's subject, system on that property.
What is the slot?
Do you wanna know? Do you have to go into the slot?
I don't know, is that like a technical term?
Yeah, I don't know. It's above me.
One comment, when you first started your remarks, you mentioned you removed the building from the survey. I think very interesting, as I follow the minutes, is we show no buildings on the final site plan either. No proposed buildings on the final site plan.
These are existing, though.
No buildings at all on...
That was a comment in our minutes, because they have proposed houses. And you said, whatever you knew from the survey, that would be survey.
Yeah, so we, we, I had them remove the new proposed building, but the existing structures are...
Existing stay at your best lot.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you wanna see the building envelope?
I, I don't think so. I think that's up to them at a later point, and being restricted in any way.
We're not trying to make the... That even us waiting, that for Rich.
Well, you know, there's so much going on here with the easements and so on, I kinda just figured that would come out when they come in to get a building.
Yeah.
Someone's gonna have to analyze that and figure out where it can go. So, yes, I typically ask for that.
Okay, so I think we can go through the secret. Sure. The secret first, and then we'll, which is the environmental review.
Okay.
And then we'll pop in from the...
Okay.
Okay?
Yes.
Okay, we're answering the 11 questions in the short form, environmental assessment form. Number one, will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations?
No.
No, it's in comments, actually. So, will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land?
No.
It can only be residential, so... Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community?
No.
Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area? Will the proposed action result in a change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure from mass transit, biking, or walkway?
No.
Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy or address incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities?
No.
Will the proposed action impact public or private water supplies or public or private wastewater treatment facilities? Will the proposed action impair the... This is a crazy new computer. Either archaeological or...
I'm not trying to move, will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources?
No. Will the proposed action result in changes, change to natural resources, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora and fauna?
No.
Will the proposed action result in increase for the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems?
No.
Will the proposed action create an hazard to environmental resources or...
No.
All of the questions being answered, no or small impact, and each chair may entertain a motion for then this secret declaration.
Valerie, I don't move the negative finding for this.
Okay. Oh, wow, okay. Get a trio there. Okay, so motion made by Arnie, I heard Judy seconded by Judy. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries for a negative secret declaration. Okay, so Lisa, were you able to publish the notice for the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay, so anyone wanna hear the reading?
Or like a motion, we need to read it with the proper notes.
Okay. Motion made by Rich, second by Arnie. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries to waive the reading and public hearing, now take a motion to open the public hearing.
I saw one.
Okay, motion made by David.
Sure.
Second by Don. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries, public hearing is open. Okay, and if you don't mind, you can have a seat in case there is anyone, is there anyone here to speak for the public hearing? Okay, I guess not, so. Is there anyone on the line, Lisa? Okay.
Nobody here, so...
All right.
Motion to close it.
Okay, motion made by Rich to close the public hearing.
Aye.
Second by Don. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, public hearing is closed. All right, sorry, I didn't know, maybe you went on here to something else. Okay, all right. Okay, so with that, we have, public hearing is closed, we've got a negative secret declaration. We, do we change any of our... Wait, so these things, or do you think we can vote?
Yeah, I, if, if, you know, the pressure of the board, you certainly can vote with the condition that this map... That the chair connects on the map until it's revised to remove the word "proposed" from the easements. And the note number five is, it's in accordance with many board attorney language to be divided.
And the actual...
Number two, that the, that the easement, right, be revised, reviewed, and approved by the many board attorney, and be filed simultaneously with the map. And the third condition would be that the map be filed in accordance with the regulations of the... I'm scared.
We want the proposed driveway.
I think we're just gonna leave it, it's not...
Yeah, okay.
I'll leave the motion to... How would you say it? Improve the two lot subdivision, with the conditions, the three conditions. Does, did you get that as well? Okay, all right, so we have a motion made by Aaron for approval of the two lot subdivision, that the conditions Jamie has not covered as far as the addition of that. Note number five, the easement, and then the actual easement, 3. And second by Rich, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Or approve all the two lot subdivisions with those conditions? Specifically written, okay. Right, any questions?
No.
Okay.
Thanks for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you. So the next item on our agenda is Twin Pond Housing LLC. This is at 5440 North Burtick Street in Fayetteville. This is on the agenda for a site plan amendment, and set a date for a public hearing. This is tax map number 086 point dash 02 dash 06 point 1.
Thank you.
Would you like to tell us what you would like to do?
First, Monday night trivia, if you were to spell the word slope without an E for a subject system, I would imagine that's the side slope would erase that system, and it was probably just missed out, so I...
Did you tell them, Mike?
No, I don't wanna like...
I second that, I was gonna say this.
I don't wanna invade anybody else's business, but that's an engineering thing, I'm like, what could come along with it? It's the slope problem.
I thought slop was a different, nice word, not the same, what is going into it.
Like the leech.
I questioned it, but it's not my...
Yeah.
Well done.
So, Brian was hired with CHA, so project engineer, and also Charlie, Charlie Brewer, the owner and applicant. So spent a lot of time on this project about a year ago, you know, working with the town board and the planning board on the approvals. So, since that time, last year in the fall, we did make some progress with our permitting, our stormwater permit. We have completed our Anadagik DOT traffic signal design and submitted that for permit to the DOT. There have been some back and forth with comments and revisions for that. And then, obviously, Charlie's side, working with the investors and financing. And then also code enforcement in the fire department, which is why we're here tonight. Working with the Village of Fayetteville Fire Department and the code enforcement office to hopefully improve some of their emergency access. And made some amendments to the site plan that we've resubmitted to you for approval. Really, this comes down to kind of providing a more robust emergency response and accessibility for different types of emergency vehicles. So there's really four things that have changed. We haven't changed any of the planning district regulations, or buildings, or number of units, or parking spaces. It's truly how to get emergency vehicles in and out. So those four things, Charlie's brought up a claim here. One is to create a new dedicated emergency access driveway off of North Burtick. You will recall that at the time when we initiated this project way back when, probably a year and a half or two years ago, Charlie was purchasing the property from a developer that you met with who had intentions of developing the piece to the south. And we were kind of paralleling them at one point, where they were in looking at commercial development, they were gonna build a new roadway there. And it was very simplistic for us to offer that we would connect to that or even have to build that before them. But there hasn't really been a lot of traction with their projects. So I'm talking with the fire department, trying to provide something that stands on its own and is more traversable, not such a long pathway during the winter that would obviously have to be maintained. So we are using, if you drove past a site, there's an existing driveway just to the north of our new signalized intersection that's been used by the quarry in the past. It's basically gravel road. We're gonna keep the curb cut there and make sure that we can get the emergency access vehicles in and out. This would be a gated entrance, right? We would have gates there for the fire department and provide a lock box with a key for them to get in and out. So it's not, it's not any type of like secondary access for residents to use, because we know that we did go through the traffic study and need to have a signalized intersection there. But having a second way to get larger fire trucks in and out is the purpose. Obviously, if there's a major car accident or a water main ruptures at that traffic signal, having another way to get people in and out of the site. So that's the first. Second is we did update the pavement section to be a more robust pavement section for the fire trucks. So it's a bigger subbase and different pavement section, which you can see in the darker gray hatch. So it's the entirety of the main access road, and then also that spur that will provide for the fire trucks getting in and out of that north entrance. So that's the second. Third, we were complying with the width of a, of a emergency access roadway, if you will, 26 feet is the minimum width. But we did widen that, so essentially what you'll see is a center line with the drive lane and a fog line. And then we added five-foot shoulders to each side of that main road. And the purpose again is that if a vehicle gets stuck or is disabled, or in the future, 20 years from now, there has to be utility work for water mains and other things, that there's enough width to be able to bypass stranded vehicle with fire trucks and emergencies. So we now have five-foot shoulders on both sides, still inclusive of the curbing and other details that we provided to you before. And then fourth is the area that we discussed with, we call it the peninsula, it's really not a peninsula because it's kind of connected, but the amenity area where we had that pavilion and walking trail going down into there, we have changed that. Obviously, we've deleted the gravel access road that goes all the way down, we'll still reserve an easement for that. But this portion from, you know, the main access drive down to a cul-de-sac will be a paved surface now. There's some comments about, you know, we don't need a fire truck or ladder truck to get down there, but in the case that, you know, somebody's injured, or we need EMS or an ambulance to get down there, having that be a paved surface and maintainable even during the winter months or whatever, ice rescues and things like that for ambulances and EMS was something that we requested to do as well. So really, those four things, the new emergency access that's on North Burtick, the heavy-duty pavement, slightly wider main access road for bypass vehicles, and then the paved surface that goes back to the amenity area for emergencies. In terms of the secondary access point, we did a few things, because we spent a lot of time with like landscaping and revegetation of that area in the past. So we're not just using the straight alignment that you see that exists there today as the driveway. We have put a radius and kind of blended it in so that there's really an obstruction of the sightlines, that this doesn't appear to be a main entrance, you really shouldn't be able to see through it. And then also residents leaving, you know, it doesn't look like an easy way out, although there will be a gate, obviously. But trying to conceal it. And then, I don't know if Charlie wants to bring it up, but C703 is kind of the focus here, where we talked about taking out that gravel access road, making sure that we put back topsoil. And instead of just doing like a grass lawn and sod or manicured lawn, we have used those same techniques that we used in the approved plans to essentially reforest that area with a native seed mix and intermixing shrubs and other tree and vegetation into the areas that would be restored outside of that driveway limit. 703, if it comes up, but we did talk about that, and any of the areas that would clear, that there would be obviously the roadway, a small piece of lawn, but that anything else extending up into the, what's wooded area now would be restored with the, a native seed mixture, and not just grass lawn.
So, at the, I'll call it an emergency driveway, will there be a gate on the internal driveway at the end of...
Correct, yep, exactly. You know, the only thing that may occur is obviously the sidewalks are obstructed, the Erie Canal Trail is there, so maybe pedestrians still can walk down, but there will be a gate at both sides, both for the fire truck and residents leaving, so that it's, you're not using it as a driveway entrance for right turns or to sneak out or anything like that, so. Yep, it's on both ends.
What is the gate open by?
It'll be a regular, I wanna call it a crash gate, but just a regular iron gate, like a small gate, you know? B-shaped, so like posts on both sides, and just a locked whole fence with a padlock on it for a knock box for the fire department.
Like black or...
Yeah, black, black iron gate, yeah.
Will there be, I'm not scaling it, on the Burtick side, if someone were to pull in, is there enough room to stop?
Yeah.
Do you consider back out, wiggle around and U-turn to get facing out, and pull out? Like, how did you come about where to locate the gate on both ends?
So, the reason to locate the gate is that there's enough room to pull a fire truck in without sticking out onto the road.
Okay.
So there's enough room to pull a fire truck in, they can get out, unlock the gate, and there's enough room to do that without encumbering the roadway. And the other side would be similar, probably not the full width of a fire truck, because now we're on private property, but enough for, you know, 10 or 15 feet. There shouldn't be any need to nose into that. Leaving, at least, like a resident leaving, you're not gonna try and pull into it, the gate would be right there, so.
But almost a parking space.
Yeah, that would make sense, so that even, you know...
Somebody will...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You see somebody, they're talking to somebody who's walking, you need to get out of the road for a second, or...
Yeah.
Because it's either like, it's right by the road, or it's far enough in.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's pretty...
Yeah, I just didn't scale it.
One car length, so the width of that access road is 26 feet, so it's probably 15 feet off of there. But yeah, enough to nose in a car without blocking the way to traffic.
Yeah, I like that you are trying to clog that up as much as possible with vegetation, so that it does not look to the level, is it gonna be, is it's not curbed or anything? So that...
It's not curbed.
...is possible, because then it doesn't look formal.
Yeah. Want it to look more like a maintenance road, although it's not a maintenance road, it's just for emergency vehicles. But yeah, it doesn't have the same aesthetic appeal as, this is the main entrance and you're driving into our development. That's just something where it's back a house and you shouldn't really see it.
Right.
Which is why we tried some of the geometry changes and then to obstruct sightlines, so that you're not just looking out to the road and it appears to be a shortcut type of thing, so.
I think it works. Will there be a... Will there be a signs on the, like on the gate just to say that?
I mean, we can, I'm not sure it's really needed. I think just having the gate there closed. You know.
It's almost like it draws more attention.
Yeah, I was going to try and say, because what we could put is emergency access only, but it would be a big white sign with red ladders and you would see it, you know? Maybe there's something small on the side that says private property or something like that. So people don't think they can walk over and go fishing in the pond or something, but.
Yeah. I mean, I, I don't, I don't have a feeling either way. It's just a question, especially Aaron's thinking that he might not want to go in there.
It's more about making sure ahead of time that everything has been done to prevent it from looking like something that they think they want to do without really thinking about it. Like eliminating all those like subconscious cues that people pick up on on where you want to pull in or not pull in. And by doing less, it's almost better. That's why I asked. I don't, I don't know. I think no signs would be better than having any, in my opinion. I don't know if the fire department has a small symbol or anything like that that they do so that their crew knows. I don't know how that stuff gets communicated, but I would almost say less, less is fine.
Yeah.
I agree with it. I agree with her.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think if it's gated, I don't think anyone's going to. It's not going to be like a action movie or people are going to try to plow through it or something.
No, but I mean, that brings up a good point is that we would put reflective tape on pieces of it. Black iron tends to blend in at night and we had that happen before where.
Oops.
Somebody thinks that they're just driving 20 miles an hour through a driveway and they end up going through the gate. So, but yeah, it's not having a big glorious sign of emergency access is probably.
And that's easy to add later.
Yeah, plus is more doesn't work.
Yeah, it's easy to add afterwards if there's a problem.
Sure, yeah. Or if the fire department wants something different, you know, typically we put the box box on the pedestal. They know just with any building response where to go to get to that key and it's a common key for the fire department. If they want to see a placard or something above it that just shows them that that's where the key is, then we can, yeah, like you said, we can add something to the post, but.
Okay. Are there other questions?
This is really pretty unrelated. Would the improved path down to the outdoor amenity area, your current photo metric plan doesn't have any lighting down there. Would there be lighting at some point or just attached to the small pavilion you expect to build there?
So the idea is no lighting and that it would be closed, right? There is a gate there as well and probably a sign that, you know, so it's, you're not supposed to be down there. I think when you start adding light and lighting up the pavilion, now it will invite people to be there at night. So it's kind of like the pool is closed after dark, right? You know, and like the light guard situation, so.
There'll be power in the pavilion, right?
Yes, yeah. I don't think we want to purposely have it lit for nighttime though. So I think as far as the residence access goes, it would be kind of, you know.
If you intended to, maybe it should have been on the front. Seem to me it might not be on the front of the plan. If you don't, I'm fine with that, but I just wanted.
Good point.
What about water? Does there even have a portable water head down there?
No.
Something to consider. People are going to be having activities and doing stuff, rinsing stuff. I mean, it's always just one of those things that, you know, all the running a water line all the way down there is probably not worth it, but.
Yeah, I think that's part of it. Just because of the length to provide always good, but. You know, there, there are, I guess conveniences like that, but I'm sure that that's really what it's intended for.
But you're going to have power.
Yeah.
Like in the pavilion and the plug setting.
Yeah.
So where do we go from here?
Yeah, I know, Erin, I was waiting for you to bring up your point because I have.
I, well, I, I have a thought about that, so.
Cause I have a follow up from the supervisor.
Oh, so when I looked at this project initially and the changes that you'd made, one of the things that jumped out at me right away was the concern of the loss of the pedestrian connection that was made by having that road with the wall the way through. And looking at it, there's not a really a reasonable way to remedy that within the project and the scope. And it's part of the intent, I believe, of the town and of the goals of the comprehensive plan and everything to have it, you know, make things more walkable. And having each project as it gets developed or each property as it gets renovated between here and down to town center. More importantly, have sidewalk pedestrian connection because I think it would be a big problem for the people that live here that if they can't walk to those things. We already see problems with people trying to walk up and down Burdick. And now I also know that I believe it's County Road.
Yes.
And the, there's been discussions about this prior to my involvement in any of it and in the project. And it's piecemeal happening, but it was something that I wanted to bring up, not necessarily in regards to you guys modifying the project, but as a general, get it on the record, ask the town board if they might have any suggestions or a timeline or work with the county and grants and all the kinds of things that they do well to figure out how we can make that happen. Because I think that that was a big important piece to this was that people could walk on that, on that road until the Burdick Street sidewalk system gets, so it was an opportunity for me to bring it up.
Yeah, so.
We certainly still have sidewalks, so I guess the easier path, you know, where she, right, would be take from the residential piece, walk down our sidewalks to North Burdick, and we do have a substantial portion of sidewalk that we're putting in.
Yeah.
I think in both scenarios, we sort of stop at our property line, but even with the gravel path, like people probably could do it, but there, there really is no signalized intersection there to get people across the road. We, we have a pedestrian signal that we are improving and putting in on our side to get people to the North Med side. So we wouldn't want to promote that because, you know, for instance, what I'm saying is like, okay, well, we're not building the whole gravel roadway, but maybe we can provide a five foot path, but then you are promoting somebody to go that way. We will retain the right to the easement. That's correct. We're just not building it. So at a point in time, if that south project or something happens there, there will still be a way to connect them by way of the easement. So we are retaining that easement for the pedestrian connection. And then obviously building the sidewalks that we can along North Burdick and then the piecemeal thing of if there's a grant to extend it a little further to get people over to the shopping center.
It's really just a, a small piece of a bigger problem.
Yeah.
Obviously, with which side sidewalks, both sides, where the crossings happen, you know, all these things are far bigger planning questions than just this project.
That's a very good point. What about having all of this in the hands of our newly appointed planner? Let him take a good look at this with his expertise in very large projects. I'm always really trying to make the first P U B, saying it fixes everything for everybody, especially with no experience. And this is going to be a great time, I think, to call in our planner, fellow in Manchester, Jim, and have him take a look at Aaron's suggestions, your suggestions, see how the town might be able to, which is very nicely, figure out a way to make this all happen.
So, so before we talk too much further, I did talk to John Dear, the town supervisor. And so, cause I knew Aaron had this concern, which is a good concern and, you know, especially with our comprehensive plan, the way we have it and then Ari, that's a good idea. We were talking, kind of talking about the planner as well. So they, they, the town board already has a study grant for North Burdick Street, the entire length of North Burdick Street, that they're looking to be able to enhance the whole corridor there for residents, businesses, travelers, et cetera, visitor, whatever. And to determine the best plan in which would include sidewalks. Sidewalks is a piece of that, all the way to the north to the canal and then south to the village. So they're trying, they're working on that right now. I don't have an exact timeline, but in that, then they're going to be submitting a New York Forward application grant to kind of fund whatever that, that includes. So Ari, like you said, we can, we can recommend that they also involve our, our planner as well in what they're looking at. If they don't get the New, New York Forward application, then they would get into another way to determine another way to fund. But it's definitely, definitely a goal of the town. I know it's a goal of the county as well in connecting the canal and the Empire State Trail and everything. So it's definitely.
So how do we get this project moving even if none of this happens? It sounds like Brian and Charlie have already figured out how much they can do within the confines of their property. So they're keeping that, those options open. They're not anyway making a barrier to this.
Right, their sidewalk helps, we've got the sidewalk spectrum as well.
It'll be the same as what you were saying, like piecemeal. We are the first ones. Here's, I don't know, it's a few thousand feet of sidewalk along our front edge. And then things like community development grants might be only 50,000.
Some people might beat you out.
Yeah, good.
They might be done first.
But similar like Cicero, right? I worked on numerous projects redeveloping, you know, Bourbon Road and it was quite literally a 20 foot piece of sidewalk out in front of Pizza Hut and another one in front of here. And then three years ago, the state came through and filled those gaps, right? They did a complete streets program and took out some of the cow paths that were under the bridges and actually built concrete sidewalks. And they only probably had to do half of it because developers along the way were kind of repositioning some of their sidewalks as they went through, even though they went to nowhere. But in the end, it was stomachable in terms of a cost to like complete it versus just going all the way from the north to the south.
Yeah, cause obviously whatever goes below, whatever goes south of you guys, if that comes before us, we'd be including the sidewalk in that. But if it's not, if that doesn't come before us anytime soon, again, I don't know the timeline of the, on the study grant, but they're actively, they already have that, so they're actively working on that already. So, sorry, Charlie.
Yeah, no, the, the, one of the last things we added was that future pedestrian access. That's, that's if they were to ever put something across the screen.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So I don't know if we had anything specific in our language that, you know, if it were to come.
Right, down to the property line. And then what she's saying is obviously if somebody comes in to get final approval for the commercial piece, they would extend to touch us. And now you've completed the, the piece.
Well, yeah, and if they don't, I mean, if that's goes years and years, the town, that's why they're also, because they, they want to create a connection. You know, like I said, all the way from the canal.
Right.
To the village of Fayetteville.
Yep.
So two things. One, I don't think that the sidewalks down those sides of the roads are going to be the biggest struggle. I think it's going to be determining the, where the crossings and how those are signed.
Yeah, that's my, yeah, there are, the sidewalks is just a piece of.
It's really easy to figure out, you put that down there. When you start working with all of those other pieces, where's the best spot? You know, there really does need a study to be done. So the other thing is it's great to do studies and have these plans and it's happening and we're working on it and all this stuff. But if people move into that pro, project and there isn't a way for, by then for them to walk to town center, I think it's going to be very bad optics for everybody. And I think that it's going to be something that's going to get a lot of bad press and is going to become a problem. I'm not saying that I, I obviously don't have a solution, but.
Yeah, that would be the top, like I said, it's the town board and like, you know, cause I don't, right? I don't know how, you know, the timeline of like the New York Forward application and the logistics for that. And, but then I, they have to, you know, dip into town funds and taxpayer money of that.
That is way down.
I think they, they definitely know, they definitely want it to be a connective corridor for sure.
That's where Ari's suggestion comes in very, right? We got our planner, we do our homework, give it to the town board and the town board knows it's going to be reflected badly on them for the move ahead.
I want to say, but they're already doing the study, they're doing the study too, so.
And it might be that these things are have prescribed timeframes for the path of all the stuff that's done. And so I guess maybe more what I'm meaning is if there's not a way to get people from A to B by the time they're there, okay. What could be a contingency plan? What could be a temporary plan? Would they be okay with striping a piece of the shoulder? I mean, there are, there are ways to phase this stuff to, to do it. And there's so many, you know, this is not our problem here to solve. For them, but this is the opportunity of, because this project is going to be driving that. And considering, you know, all of the other moving pieces, obviously the planner is the best choice in my opinion. But even if you have any temporary safety precautions, people are going to do it until it has the, what time to go to the proper channels and the money that's available and all that.
Right, described as consistently what we see in other communities where we work. Developers come in, it's Brian and I, it's head, right? Whether it's Cicero, you know, do it, Salina, wherever, consistently, these are the type of things that people are doing these days. So, you know, Charlie's a developer here, he's said nicely enough to say yes, he would put the sidewalk in, right? So that, that's a good coup. And then moving forward, I mean, I get the same discussion with John, right? And there are a lot of things that he's got moving for the rest of the corridor. Right, and, and the things I've talked to John about is, you know, that, that corridor up to the New York Trail. You know, there's a good potential refunds, but, right? I mean, specific to this project, right? We've got just about everything that we need for that sidewalk, right? I mean, I can have John Steinmetz look at this, but I don't know if he's going to come back with anything else, right? Somebody else has already, somebody else has already looked at the corridor study. So from our opinion, you know, I don't think it really benefits anybody. I mean, you know, I, I believe John told me that Lovella is working on the whole corridor study. Right, and if this board wanted input on that, then, you know, we should probably coordinate with Lovella who they, they cleared to do that.
Well, it sounds like it might be a duplication of effort then to have John Lovella.
Yeah, we, we can remind John Dear that we have John Steinmetz and if they need, you know, any extra input. But yeah, Lovella has planners as well on their.
Cause there's some other things that I've talked to John Dear about, right? Not, not only in this.
And I don't know what's in the study, you know, what's in the grant for the study.
Right.
Funding wise.
Right.
To throw another.
Yeah, and then they're on the mechanism going after.
Is there anybody who can summarize who all the players are involved in this issue?
Or the.
The sidewalks, the connectivity between, say, Route five and the canal.
Like if there were to be a coordinated review.
Well, just understand, he's doing what? You know, we sort, you mentioned it, I agree, if you separate part of the road, it was a county road. And unfortunately, there's concrete curves on both saw, give them about a two and a half foot shoulder to hit the concrete. So it becomes a very, I like the idea, but I'm not sure under the current hardware system how that could happen. Being a county road, should the county, should the county thinks about?
So, so traditionally, right, and, and Brian can add his head, because I'm sure he's been through it too, right? On a county road, the county railways, so if a community wants to put infrastructure in that right away, in this case a sidewalk, there would be licensing agreements, right? That there'd be a licensing agreement with the town manliness, with the county of Anadaga to put a sidewalk in, that the town of Manlius would take all liability, maintenance and operation of that sidewalk, right? And then those are the type of agreements that would go into there. And then in this corridor, what you're talking about, trying to get down to Route five, you would have the same thing with going through the village.
I was going to say that's the village, I know.
And the Empire Trail could be something for, you know, state art.
That's part of, yeah, that's part of the plan on Anadaga for the county too, so.
It's like every single checkpoint.
So there's a lot of.
Yeah, which is how.
There's a lot of layers to answer Don and Erin's questions. There's a lot of, yeah, there's a lot of layers. We, I mean, you guys are, feel free, you could ask the John Dear for who actually are the people involved in this study grant. I didn't get the actual specifics of like, working on the study.
You know, there's, there's money out there, but you know, something, something like this and.
The safe streets money.
Yeah, we, I mean, we just did one about this size for another community.
Oh, I know we're doing all.
Five, six million dollars.
So I just want to make sure that with all this great thinking that we're doing, that Charlie and Brian can move a project forward. Cause I haven't heard anything yet while this grand planning that would restrict this project from going forward.
That wasn't my sense at all. It's really Aaron mentioning the projects here, there's 300 apartments with people on a walk and they can't do a content like.
Yeah, so.
It was an after project completed issue, it's really a public good.
I want to take leverage for you too, because I totally agree, like everything starts with a study. We do this because once you have the study formed, there are grant opportunities. You can duplicate the study to apply for different grants, whether it's parks or whatever else. So having the project be a backer to the use of that is important, right? Community development grants make you prove how you're benefiting the community. We have 300 new residents and developer put in X amount of sidewalk and that there's only a little bit left to connect, whether it's to the north or the south.
So you guys moving forward with your project.
Yeah, is, is something that could, I think, bolster your grant writing or whoever is writing your grant to, to prove the case as a community benefit, specific to like community development money, right? We do it in North Syracuse all the time, so.
Does the project have to be a percentage? Does the project have to be a percentage completed before it can be utilized for?
No, I mean, we've even, we've even based on your, not your, but a municipality's land use plan or comprehensive plan. That there is the intent to provide more density in this area and that we want to spur that development first by providing things like. A sidewalk or water infrastructure, taking people off septic, we're going to provide sewer out there. Houses don't exist yet, but if we provide sidewalk, sewer and water, somebody's going to want to develop it, right? And maybe this is background a little bit where we'll be in construction, but hopefully can, you know, use that to the advantage, right?
Yeah, so this had no bearing. This was not. Anything I think that prevents the project from moving forward at its current pace or whatever pace you want to take. This was always a concern I had about that connection. But the applicant's willingness to put the sidewalk on their parcels is needed and then also the fact that we had that back way. As a way for people to go if they needed to. Was like a Band-Aid until this business on Berdick got sorted out because it's complicated. But then taking that away, I understand why you're doing it. I'm not suggesting that you change anything. I feel like it's another opportunity to revisit that and the urgency and the importance of that pedestrian connection is off. I don't think that has anything, I don't think you should change your project at all because of what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I just wanted to make that clear. Okay. So I think that, oh.
No, I was just going to say that a lot of what we're discussing, we have nothing to do with. It's, it's the town board.
Yeah.
And I think what we need to do first, let's get this project moving forward.
Right.
To help some of this other stuff fall into place later.
Yeah, so that's what I was going to say. So we can move on from that.
It's, it's good discussion, but this is a planning.
Language.
So, yeah, so we've had a good discussion about it. We can. Again, have, we can continue on with, with what we need to do for this project. But feel free, like I said, the town board has that study grant. Feel free to reach out to any of the board members about it, especially John Dear. If you have other ideas and, you know, Doug with his planner can. Just remind them that we do have John Stein that's as a resource if it's, if it works into the grant, part, piece of it. So Jamie has advised me that we do need to get a short form EAF. For this.
Okay. I don't.
Just for, we can still, we'll still set the date for the public hearing.
So you're going to?
Because we will go through.
No, it's just going to, it's just going to be a modification.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just about, it's not about the whole thing.
Yeah.
It's about this.
Okay. That's fine. Short form. And I'll just say the basics of why we're changing, what we're changing and why and that, yeah.
Yep.
Shorter than us, yeah, for the next meeting is fine.
So do we have to go through C G R again?
Yeah, it, yes, but it's going to be. Trumpy and, yeah, that, yeah, it'll be, it'll be small. I mean, if it were like, oh, we're just putting like a little addition on, but it, it is totally changing the easement, so.
Sure.
I think it's prudent.
I will get that to Lisa by Wednesday.
Okay.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, it's next.
I don't remember that.
There's next week in April.
The long, the long one.
Next week in April, but then we only have one meeting in May.
So we only have one meeting in May, so we're going to, I'm going to look for a motion to set the public hearing for May twelfth.
Yep.
Which is our only May meeting. And because I know last time we waited a little bit longer between the public hearing, but this is an amendment. And the emergency access road, which doesn't affect anything else, so we feel there's plenty of time. And we've got that extra week in there, so it should be good.
Only say a motion.
Okay.
For the public hearing on the twelfth?
May twelfth.
May twelfth.
Motion made by Rich, second by David, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, motion carries for public hearing with May twelfth. Hope that works for you.
No, that's fine. May twelfth is good and I'll get you the short form. Thank you. Great.
I don't have any other business other than what we just discussed. Like instead of any other questions or comments, otherwise I'd look for a motion.
We're sure, Jen.